Okay, so welcome everyone to tonight's monthly meeting. We are honored and very pleased to have the junior girl scout troop with us tonight, and they will be leading us in the pledge, so everyone will stand for the pledge.
Agents to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone on the troop want to talk about what you guys have been doing? I know you've visited the office, and what you learned from Fran and Mary.
Would you like to tell them what the badge you're working on?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
Just stand up because you're going to be on film, but don't worry about it.
You can tie your shoes on.
We're getting a badge, and we're talking about what do you do in the village hall and all of the programs.
Does anyone remember the name of the badge we're working on?
It's called Inside Government.
So they're studying local government, and they're also learning about campaigns, since it's campaign season, so that's part of their badge work too, designing a campaign.
This might not be a good season for it. And did you find anything interesting when you visited, that you didn't know about?
What did you see when we came last week with Clerk Sari?
The record books from the old school. The book wears all the people who is born here and died here.
It's cool. Clerk Sari and Trustee Murphy brought out the big old record books, which were really fun to see.
With really nice handwriting.
Do you all live in the village?
Yeah.
Mostly.
Mostly? What do you guys like about the village? What's your favorite thing?
The candy store.
Anybody else?
I like the waterfront.
You like the waterfront? Yeah. Anybody else have a favorite? No?
It's hot.
I could put you on the spot. Well, I'm really glad you guys came. It's nice to see you, and I'm sure you're doing some good work and heading for better things. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next one has a roll call.
Dave Mirandi?
Here.
Marie Early?
Here.
Lynn Miller?
Here.
Frances Murphy?
Here.
Steve Vellato?
Here.
Thank you, Michael.
As you've noticed, Michael is taking minutes and notes tonight, plus filming. We worked out, working with the numbers that we had for Cecile, who is our filmer for quite a while now. She would just film on the monthly meetings. And then Michael and Greg Gunder have been working on putting stuff online for us, and doing all the other meetings, but cost-effectively, having Mike here tonight, we can get almost everything done for the same amount. So, we finally have filming. This is kind of a trial run. See how it works with the audio on this, because we don't have mics for everyone. So, it's a bit of a trial run, but hopefully it works out. And we'll have films for everything, and we can then post them on Facebook. And also, this meeting will go on the channel.
Public access.
Public access.
If that's what you've discussed with Greg?
Greg will put it on the public access channel.
So, thank you, Michael, and Greg. Monthly reports, a little slim tonight. Recreation Commission, we don't have one. Planning, I have a written one submitted from Chair Matt Francisco. The planning has the following matters before us at this time. Old business, Two Depot Square, application for an amended site plan for alterations to existing multifamily residential building. From three dwelling units to four dwelling units, the subject property is known as TaxMap 48.12-2-2, and is in the B1 Zone in National Historic District. The planning board will hold a public hearing on this matter this Thursday, 10/13/2016. All interested parties are encouraged to be encouraged to and be heard. Thank you, Matt. Zoning, we have nothing in zoning. Town of Phillips Town.
Okay, where should we go here? Don't like the...
I guess it's there, whatever.
If you can be sort of...
We'll have to put two little feet down.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, good, yeah, okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you, thank Ed Trimmel for his many years of service to the Village of Cold Spring. And I'd like to wish Chris Hyatt, the new member of the town highway department, best of luck to him. Okay, we had a public hearing the other night regarding local law of vehicle traffic. As you know, over the summer, we had a lot of problems on Indian Brook Road. A lot of cars parked out there, and it makes it very hard for emergency vehicles to get through that road. So, this law enables us to make it a little bit easier for us to ticket those vehicles in other places also in the town of Phillips Town. That was one thing we had. We also had a secret declaration on the Mantho Station Road the other night. We had that. The next steps at Mantho Station Road will be to do a couple more additional borings, and we're still waiting for the DEC permit. If we do get the permit in the next few weeks, there's a very good possibility to get that road started before winter. Couldn't finish it, but hopefully we at least get something started. Also, we started the second phase of roads resurfacing up to the North Highlands, ladder roads, which we did several miles of road. We did the Fiber Mat earlier in this year. We did the second phase, started today. If you take a ride up there, it looks pretty nice. I saw it today. It's like, almost looks like Blacktop Road now. It looks pretty good. They'll finish it up for the next day or two. Should be done. Also, we met with Land Works this morning at the Washburn Moon parking lot today. They're going to start that project later this week. They anticipated getting this whole project completed within a month and a half to two months, providing they don't have any stoppages also. Just to let know, people know, they plan on closing the parking lot during the week. On weekends, if it's permitted, they will keep the lot open for personal parking during the weekends. Can't say it's going to be open every single weekend, but we're going to try to do our best to keep that lot open on weekends, if possible. Okay? So that's... Also, we passed a resolution the other night opposing the Coast Guard Anchorage. So that's on the books right here for Phillips Town. As you know, there's a lot of discussion around that. We have a newspaper over the last seven months regarding that. So we put a proposal against it. So also, we had a big discussion the other night about the safe storage of firearms. We had a full house regarding that. A lot of people, must have been 50, 60 people in the town all that night regarding that. We've got a lot of people who are for it. Again, at this stage, we're just, it's just discussion. We're not really making any decisions at this point. I'm sure in the next several months, there'll be more about that going on. Also, we had bid going out for highway materials going out. Also, we're starting our town budget process tomorrow night. We're starting our budget process tomorrow night. We're meeting with a bunch of different municipal fire companies and so forth. So, that's going to take about a month and a half to finish. So, that's everything I can throw out.
Can you send us a copy of the resolution that you...
Sure.
We're going to be discussing that and working on that.
Sure.
So that'd be good.
Okay, no problem. Thanks.
And where are we with the Dally House?
Okay, yeah, we're finalizing the plans. We've got the final plans now, and they look really nice. They look real nice. So now, we should be at a point where we should be able to go out to bid, let's say, in the next few weeks or so.
Thanks. Historic district review.
I'm sorry that we don't have a written report tonight. Our board is a little busy right now. So, we're meeting on Sunday for the ordinance. We're now formatting the comparison that we promised you of existing text versus the proposed text, so it'll be easier for you to read and easier for the public to follow as well. The SHIPO contract, Mary got that in right under the wire. There were a lot of problems with the electronic filing system for the contracts. Every municipality had trouble getting it in. It's SHIPO's new electronic filing system. But we made the deadline. And Al is working with the village attorney to finalize the contract with Tilly. There was some duplication of efforts between the contracts, and we're trying to slim it down to a more streamlined contract. But that's in process and should be done hopefully by the end of the week. Some of us are going to come in and help Mary with the village clerk with the scanning project. So hopefully, that will help her to move along. She has some more volunteers. She's just, I think, organizing her head around how she's going to work with other folks to get that process done. And that will mean more digitized records for us, which we hope can at some point be more accessible to applicants who are trying to look at what's been passed for their house before, discussed for their properties before. And the last, the chairman had sent you a communication about whether, if the building inspector has an electronic tracking system, if that can somehow be made available either on the village website or somehow to boards so that we can see the status of applications. We've had a couple of situations in the last month. We've had a couple of situations in the last month where there's been different communication to applicants from the building inspector than was given to the board. And then there is confusion when the applicant is before the board about what next steps are. And it would be very helpful if there were some way to be able to see what the actual status of the process is for an application. I don't know if, you must, there must, there's a tracking number, so there must be an Excel spreadsheet or something that helps them move things along. That's it from us.
Southern County, don't have anybody. Cold Spring Boat Club, I did receive an email from Commodore asking if they want to put a gate up with, there's the wide opening now. They want to mimic what's there, the fence, using the fence. They'll put the fence, it'll be a metal gate, but the fence will, you know, have a fence facade, so it blends in and works across. So, they asked me to see if the board would agree to that. They sent the picture, but it's not worth showing. It's a superimposed pic. It's over a triangle. Any thoughts on that?
Does it have to go before each door?
Yeah, and does that need to, I don't think it has to, it's through us, but I think we could send that to you, or have them talk to you about it.
We talked about about, well, actually, with Greg, we talked about a portion of that fence. That's around the existing boat?
Well, the boat club's surrounded now, but there's an opening, and they have no way controlling, supposedly people are going, doing donuts in there. That's what I heard, don't know, we have proof of that, but...
So they're just continuing the existing fence?
Yeah, well, just where the opening is where they go in and out, ingress, egress. They wanted to put a gate there, you know, open and close, so they can lock it out when they're not there, or shut it when they're not there. So they want...
Well, I don't think it necessarily needs to be a different review, but if they were, if they were, because it's, who owned, you own it or they own it?
We do.
So, I mean, it probably would just be a courtesy, a courtesy letter. But it would be from, it would be you. You'd be the applicant on.
They're basically just, they're going to use the same exact fence and put it on it.
Right, so if you just document that for the file.
I don't know, well, that's a question.
That may be, yeah, I mean, I would hear everyone's thoughts, but we're going to be talking to them shortly. That may be topic of discussion. I'm not sure I want them to lock it up.
Does Cito use the launch there if they're doing a rescue?
Yeah, I think they do use that.
Because if it was launched and they needed a rescue, I mean, if they needed a rescue and they couldn't get in, it would be problematic.
Yeah, they'd never had it locked before, haven't they? They'd never had it get there before. So I'm not sure why they need one now.
All right, he didn't mention whether it was locked or not. I assume they were, so I'll follow up with him, and I'll send you the logo for what it's worth. And then I'll run it by you guys. Thank you, bye. Fire company?
I have the chief's report. Monthly fire company report for October 2016. 14 calls for the month of September, five activated fire alarms, three EMS assists to Phillips Town ambulance, three personal injury auto accidents, mutual aid to Garrison Fire Company, two brush fires, mutual aid to Continental Fire Company, and one smell of something burning in a home. The chief would like to say the fire company was asked to look into the accessibility from Main Street entering onto Furnace, if they were to put a bump-out island on the east side of the Furnace Street to plant in at the tree. They did attempt access from up and down Main Street, and found that trucks would hit the island, and also have to drive up on a curb on the west side. So their recommendation is not to follow through with the idea. And that is it.
Were the fire alarms, I believe that there's a statute or a law that says, after X number of fire alarms from the same fire alarm, that the people owning the fire alarm would be fined. Is that happening?
I don't know. Well, it doesn't say that they all came from the same place. It just says five activated alarms.
Right. Can we find out whether or not the fire company is following up on that?
Yeah.
Also, we need to start going through their budget. When will they be visiting us with their budget?
They did not give me a time. I talked to them about it the other day when we were discussing the parking.
Okay.
I only had Steve there at the time.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve Adams.
Steve Adams, okay. Again, we will be looking for their proposed budget for 2016, 17, sorry, 17, 18, as well as their actuals for 2016, 17.
Okay, also, you were, we were talking earlier about the parking ones. We've talked about that, so...
You want to discuss that now, or?
Yeah, we're talking about that.
Okay. Well, they want to mark the new spots with red paint in a normal, you know, parking spot size hash marks up the side of the, next to the curb. And they want to print in the middle of the parking spot, "Fire Department only." And all in red, they want to do. And they want to put four signs on their building from one end of the building to the other, spread out equally to say, "No Parking Fire Company Only." And they want to get rid of the signs that are currently on the signboard. And that's really all they have.
Is that supported by the DOT?
Well, they are concerned about involving the DOT. Because...
Sorry.
Well, currently, some of the, some of the entrances and exits out of the fire station, there is currently parking there, and there shouldn't be, according to the Department of Transportation. So, they're, you know, wondering if it's necessary to involve the Department of Transportation.
The first question is, are red stripes a valid indicator that no park, by the DOT rules, are red stripes an indicator of no parking? I've never seen red stripes.
Well, it's for the fire company. I've seen orange, I've seen white, I've seen yellow.
But what we need to do, if we're going to have a no parking zone, then we need to make sure that motorists who park there are... We need to make sure that the markings to indicate no parking are supported by the DOT, or no one, or people will be able to park there legally, and we don't want that to happen.
They think the signs in the red paint's sufficient, but I don't know.
I'm sorry, I, I, we really need to make sure that this is a supported marking by the New York State Department of Transportation.
It shouldn't necessarily mean we have to get the DOT involved. We can probably go on to the...
Okay, well, that's...
We can probably go to the DOT's website and find the regulations of colors and whatever the regulations are.
So, the painting, the painting color and striping is number one. Number two is, is no parking signs on the side of the building sufficient?
Well, I've seen it in a lot of places, however.
Don't want to see it in a lot of places. Is it supported by the DOT?
Okay, well...
Again, if we're going to try to create a no parking zone, let's make sure that it is enforceable.
And also visible. I think red will be harder to read, yellow or white.
Well, white's what they have everywhere, so...
But white is, white's not good enough, as it turns out.
Right.
Right, white curbs, curbs painted white are not enforceable.
Right, but what is yellow?
I don't know.
Like we have out front on the village hall.
I know that the ones on the corner of Rock Street is not enforceable.
Before we go through every street in the town, I will, I will talk to Anthony Phillips, and he is actually the chair of the parking.
Parking committee, yeah.
And I'll ask him about the stripes. I have to follow up on a few things with Anthony, so I will talk to him.
Well, the answers to those questions did not come from the fire company. I could say that.
All right, so I know what they want. I'll see what we can do, and see what, you know, is legal, and what will actually work, or, and I'll bring that back to you guys. Go from there. Sound good?
Yes.
Parking committee, speaking of. Don't have anything there. Tree Advisory Board, don't think we have anything from GEN.
Yeah.
We do?
There's a letter in there.
Got mixed in these. Okay, Tree Advisory Board, September, report to the village board trustees. In September, the Tree Advisory Board has been focused on finalizing plans for Phase 1 of the beautification zone project on Main Street, and beginning plans for Phase 2. Phase 1 involves tree pits surrounds, pavers, and garden plantings in a 50-foot run adjacent to 93 through 91 Main Street and Village Hall. Phase 2 will involve four tree pits and a 30-foot unfinished paving strip adjacent to 73 through 61 Main Street. We hope to have Phase 1 substantially completed this fall. In total, there are approximately six beautification zones of various lengths, as well as three smaller areas. The first zone completed this fall will be the example we will use to aid in fundraising for the subsequent zones. Board members have identified two possible grants to avail all to assist the village in a larger tree maintenance project, and are gathering materials to prepare these applications. We are also making plans for fall planting of several trees on village streets, and are cooperating with Halden and Savvy, and replanting several young trees located in the way of their new parking lot area. We are also preparing fall photos for our forthcoming Tree Walking Tour brochure. All of the above is in addition to ongoing preliminary organization of tree maintenance work and work to complete the tree management plan. Respectfully, Jennifer Sword. Thank you, Jennifer. Code update?
The code update committee held two meetings in September. Discussions are held on the feedback received at the August 3 meeting, and from subsequent written comments received by August 31st. The committee began to prepare outlines for each of the topics in the next category, which is appearance. Research was begun into those topics.
Thank you, Marie. Water, wastewater?
We start off with the wastewater report, department report. We had a preventive maintenance project performed on the South Clarifier. And if you remember, last month, we talked about an emergency that had happened in the north. And so, in seeing what, you know, the potential work, we got red on getting to the south to save this about $400, $400, $500, which of course is always good. And it's easy to plan things, and they have to happen to you. We also utilize the Vector and Jetter Company to clean out about 1,500 feet of problematic collection man, areas that either have bellies in the lines, or, you know, become, you know, slower floor areas, or, you know, there's a couple of spots that actually, you know, restrict themselves because of the grease that's in the lines. So we periodically clean them. We did that as well, and cleared the greasing grit accumulated from the West Street pump station, and that was about $4,400 to accomplish those tasks. That happens once or twice a year, depending on what the door does. And the more we can get people not to flush grease down the toilet, the less we have to do those things. So, always a good thing to remember. West Street mitigation project, the pump station, we were just talking about fencing. We own the fence panels, and we're looking to get them installed. We've gotten two proposals so far, and not one of them was less than 10 grand. So we're looking to come up with some other ideas, and I know we spoke with the mayor about it, to potentially find some local vendors that would, contractors or individuals that we could work with to make something happen there.
You said you had one more, did somebody else?
It was across county, and they hadn't gotten back to me yet. So I'm not anticipating it's going to be any less than anybody else.
How long is the run of fences?
The one enclosure is roughly 14 by 16. That's the one on New Street that's mostly done already. And the one on West Street is 32 by 18.
And you already have the panels?
We have the panels in the post. They need to be installed. West Street, they both also need to have a gate fabricated with the fence panel face on it.
Seems like we're...
It certainly did. It does. So if that's out there, so any, you know, you guys are contractors, anything you can come up with that helps us figure that out. We're supposed to be done by November 13th, so, you know, we're coming up on it.
Is there a penalty if it's not done?
There isn't at all. It's just that we give them, you know, we give them a target date, and that's the date we'd given, you know, earlier in the year. We're just trying to stick to it. We can't, didn't really think it was going to take this long to find somebody to put it in. Sometimes. Oh, and regarding, there had been questions in the past about the Fair Street site, and trees, and plantings, and whatnot. I've gotten some input from the Tree Advisory Board via GEN. And we're going to check out the budget. We're pretty sure we came in under budget pretty well on the project, and make sure that we have enough in there to buy some trees this fall and get them installed for winter.
You had some promises of donations also, didn't you?
There were two, as far as I know, that came in, yeah.
Okay.
Good looking, you know. So we're getting closer. And you're going to find out what's left in the budget, and try to get, you know, instead of piecemealing it, if we can get the whole thing done at once, I think it's going to look better, it'll grow the same, and all those good things.
Great.
That's the plan. That's wastewater. Any questions? Water department, we start with the meter replacement project. Last week, we received the new water meters and cellular endpoints, roughly almost 900 pieces of, you know, the new meters, varying sizes from the small household ones up to the four-inch meter that goes into school. Earlier today, we had a meeting with the contractor, East National Water LLC, to establish the construction schedule and sign contracts for the project. It appears as if residents can expect to hear from the contractor by month's end, and that installations will begin in early November. And of course, we sincerely appreciate any and all resident cooperation in getting these scheduled. Because what they're going to do basically is they're going to put it in the paper that it's going to be happening, you know, where the contractors selected. This is the project, hopefully starting at this point. That'll be the broadcasting, and then for each area that they're going to work in, they're going to go into that area and put cards on the doors. They have an online registration, so people will be able to go to their website and register when they could get the meter installed. So, you know, they're, it's what they do. They're really good at their work in Wapanders, putting 4,000 meters in, and I'm hearing nothing but good things about them. So, you know, hopefully, it's going to be pretty seamless, and we can get this done.
What is the process of installation?
What?
What's the process of the installation in terms of?
Installation?
What's the homeowner expected? Do they have to get in the house?
Yeah, it'll be in the house, yeah. Right now, you have an actual meter on your water line in your basement, and you've got a remote that's outside your house. The remote is no longer going to be in play, because now it's a cellular endpoint. Basically, this has to be inside the exterior wall of the house, so nothing on the outside anymore. The meter is already installed in your house, and this is a direct change out, same size, same everything. They're going to loosen the nuts on it, put new washers into it, and, you know, it's the startup of the cellular endpoint itself that actually takes longer than the install of the meter. But it's probably about an hour to an hour and a half per residence, and, you know, they need full access to the basement. So, so that's going to start, they're hoping to begin the actual installations in the beginning of November. And they hope to be mostly done by the end of this quarter. We're kind of hoping 100% will be done by the time we read meters next, and they've said probably about three-quarters of the way if all goes well, because there's a couple of holidays, we've got Thanksgiving in there. We've also got Christmas, so it's going to delay some of the... But, well, so far, so good. Seem like a good bunch of guys. They seem like they really know what they're talking about. The questions they asked of us were, you know, well-founded, and so I think it's good.
I had just one more question. Like, the signal isn't always great throughout Cold Spring. I know in my street, I can't make calls from certain areas of my yard. Is that going to affect how the meters work?
The way these work is that it's not dedicated to any one carrier, so it will take the strongest carrier and carry it that way. And it's also not a call like your cell call. It's more like a text. And if you ever notice, sometimes you can get a text when you can't get a phone call. This is based on that same, it's a very brief, short spurt of information that goes out there.
Greg, I'm assuming that they install us all have ID badges?
They're going to have badges. They're going to be in trucks that are marked. There's a whole procedure they're going through. They're supplying to us as of today with the contract signed. They're going to supply to us their plan. And then we approve that, and it's a submittals process. We approve what they're doing. We approve the language they're going to use in the paper. We approve the cards that are going to get hung on the doors. So, we're going to, you know... So, we're going to, you know, have for control. It's going to be what we need it to be.
Have you had any test installations yet?
We have five right now, five cellular endpoints that are gathering data since the 22nd of July, I think is when we put them in. And they are just storing data. We are now in the process of registering those points with Badger, and then we're going to have a training session with everyone in the office to just look at the data that comes in from those units to see how it's going to present and what it's, you know, how we're going to deal with it.
So they won't, those units will not have registered, will not have transmitted for the upcoming billing cycle?
The one that we're at, no. The one they just sent out, no.
Got you.
We went to each one of those units and took a reading off the LCD.
You did?
We didn't take it out of the cloud. There's only five of them, some ones in the basement here, so easy enough. So we still have that information, it just didn't come out of the cloud.
Okay.
You're out of the basement.
(laughing).
Okay, so we're hoping that's going to be a smooth thing, and again, cooperation is huge. You know, the more efficient everyone is in trying to accommodate them, they're not going to put anybody through any, you know, undue aggravation, but, you know, it definitely is a, you know, a little bit of give and take on getting everything lined up. Upper dam repair, a couple of months ago, and this actually isn't in the report you're looking at, because I thought about this afternoon, a couple of months ago, we received a contract proposal from Tectonic Engineering about the design phase for the upper dams. And we were okay with everything that happened, but we wanted counsel to review. We got back from John and I think Eric, a rider that they wanted to attach to the contract, which I then forwarded to Tectonic, and they're okay with it. So the only thing that has to happen is a signature, because you've already seen the contract, our lawyer has, and he added a rider to it, which they're okay with. So the reality of it is, it can be signed and get the process rolling. So, you know, if, if we can get everything put together even by the end of this week, if it, I mean, if it pleased you guys to be able to get that signature on, it could help us move along. Because I think we had already voted, pretty sure we had already voted on it pending the lawyer's approval.
Yeah.
So he's got the rider attached to it, will bring everything down and get it ended this week or when Mary gets back next week. So that's going to help us, because there's a little bit in there that has to do with temperature of the water, because there's some inspections that happen, and they don't want to get it to where it's, where it's too cold. You don't want to be in December trying to get things done. So that's out there. And then, interesting news, between October 1st and 2nd, the master meter, which is outside of the, you know, the big tanks set around Frisco Road, the master meter, that all the water that goes from that facility into the village, hit the 2 billion gallon mark. 2 billion gallons blows my mind, so I don't know how anybody else feels about it.
That's fantastic. That is great.
We've been online since September of 1997. The filtration facility has served our community well and represents a significant investment, which continues to be an asset for all of us. Still, looking at the facility 19 years later, I see the need for more maintenance in TLC than we currently have time for. We have deteriorated coatings of process piping, filter housings, et cetera, as well as the physical building itself, which need to be addressed in order to stay ahead of preventable failures. The very same issues are present at the wastewater facility as well, though with our recent upgrades, we have a lot more shiny objects down there. So what I'd like to talk about is having a discussion of staffing and coverages and ways that we can, you know, get the facilities the attention that they need. And so I was, we also need to ensure redundancy of licensed, qualified people to run the systems under different circumstances and changing needs.
Absolutely.
Which we really haven't had. And just kind of, when we hit the mark of the number of the water, I just kind of started thinking about everything else, and if we can put together potentially a committee or, you know, to look at how we're doing things, then it's going to be it. Okay.
You got it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
I volunteer.
I volunteer.
Great.
How about you? You going to be there?
(laughing).
I'll leave you a note.
All right.
So you want to coordinate?
Yeah, yeah. I'll talk to you this week.
I think some walkthroughs, just some, like, general kind of layout of what happens and how to make it more efficient or see what we need to make it happen.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Greg.
Greg?
Thanks, Greg. Thank you.
Do you want to, just to authorize me to sign that, now do a motion for that?
Oh, yes.
So, make a motion to authorize myself to sign a contract with Tectonic for the foundry dam repair engineering.
Design.
Design.
No second to this.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Highway, we're still getting up to speed with the new highway crew chief, so hopefully the next meeting, we will have a report and get him a laptop and an email and a phone and all that good stuff. So we don't have anything from there. Let's see, village police department, or no, we have code enforcement. Do we have anything? We don't have anything from them. Highway, police department, builder Cold Spring, police department reports the following information for the month of September. Officers respond to 69 calls for service, 38 tickets were issued to motorists for various vehicles, traffic infractions, half of these were issued to speeding motorists. Officers issued 149 parking violations to vehicles for violating village parking code regulations. Howling school, officers have been ordered to the following locations during student drop-off and pickup, Mountain Avenue and Locust Ridge, Main Street and Locust Ridge, and Route 9D, in the area of the tennis courts, enforced vehicle and traffic laws, and parking regulations. Officers are, officers are paying special attention to the crosswalks, stop signs, and compliance of speed limit. To date, the number of complaints in Locust Ridge area have declined, and most motorists and pedestrians are obeying the law. Parking complaints, officers continue to enforce overtime parking regulations throughout the village. Residents of lower Main Street are reminded to obtain or update their resident parking permits to avoid receiving a ticket. Business owners and their employees are urged not to park on Main Street. Fall foliage, summer may be over, but here in Cold Spring, the tourist season continues. As a result, additional officers may be assigned to foot patrol on the weekends. I did discuss this when, when Sea Streak was coming in with Officer Kane, but the weekend weather wasn't that great, and Sea Streak only had, well, the first was 48 and then 100 or 50 or 200.
100, 150, especially in the weekend.
So it wasn't the mass of tourists that we had last year. So that's on hold. To continue, police department is currently awaiting the arrival of a new police car, which was purchased at state bid. This purchase will give a facelift to the current fleet of vehicles. And finally, watch out for deer. Cold Spring Police Department reminds drivers to be alert, especially on Route 9D, as deer actively, activity during the dawn and dusk hours are now high. Each year, we have several car versus deer collisions on Route 9D. Some helpful hints are listed below. Be especially alert during peak activity times at dawn and dusk. Scan highway shoulders for deer eyes reflecting light. One deer running across is often followed by others, hurrying to catch up. And if a collision is unavoidable, hold the steering wheel, don't swerve, and bring the vehicle to a complete stop on the shoulder. The most serious accidents happen when a driver swerves to avoid a deer and crashes into something else. And that's it from the police department. Justice court, September monthly report, fines forfeited bales and civil penalties, $3,518. Parking tickets, $4,832. Civil fees, $332.50. Mandatory state surcharges, $2,535. Per grant, total of $11,217.05. Respectfully, Thomas J. Costello, village justice. Report, mayor and board of trustees. Who would like to start in there?
I have a couple of comments. Is Julie still with us? She just, I spoke with Julie Hartford and James Hartford today. You may remember, they were, wanted to purchase the property, George property immediately in front of their new, new structure on Main Street at 178 Main Street. Juhi and James agree, are in agreement with the purchase price as established by the village and are in agreement that they will bear the burden of the attorney's fees. However, they are in the, as you're aware, they're in the progress, process of doing the construction in front of their building. And what they would like, and I think it's the right thing to do, is to get a conditional approval for them to build out on the land while they are going through the legal process of completing the purchase and transfer of the land. So I'd like to recommend that we conditionally approve the construction of, I believe it's the front steps to their building on village land until such time as they are able to complete the purchase.
Do you want to make a motion?
I, I make a motion to that effect.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Juhi. There was a second topic. There was an article in one of the papers last week about this village board and our greed in, and the resulting drop in passengers on some of the tourist boats. I wanted to point out that the tourist boat in question raised their prices at the beginning of their fall foliage tours before the village had ever begun any discussions with them about the docking fees. So the village is in no way responsible for the increase in fees. We had nothing to do with it. So there was a little misinformation there.
I would just like to add that there is like, there are, I believe, at least 400 passengers they, they can carry. Their first trip up here, and I'm sure they wouldn't have done it if they couldn't have made some money, was 48 passengers. So, once again, we had nothing to do with people in New Jersey boarding the ship coming here. The ship came here, it had 48 people. Last week, the weather's there, people go down, buy their tickets, they're not, if they're not coming up here, it's not because the docking fee went up $2 or whatever it went up. It's, so I also heard this today, which.
I just wanted to bring out that the village did not cause the Sea Streak to increase their prices.
We did increase, we did increase their rates, which we thought was justifiable. We were charging nothing. We did, we did raise it, they did agree to it.
Yes.
And we allowed them to stay at the dock to make it even more convenient for them. They paid an additional $2 a foot. It's only hundreds of dollars compared to, I think it's $45 a head?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five dollars a head. They, that is their fee. It was 65 last year.
So.
And, and the research that was done for us, thanks to the boat club, was that we are not even charging what we should be charging. We are, we are a cheap place to dock, so.
And also, that one of the other misinformation was that they were going to Beacon, which is impossible, because I don't believe Beacon has a dock. But, anyway, a couple of things going around the village, once again, we're responsible.
Yes. Dave Morandi and company. I know that I received my 2015 real estate tax rebate in the past week or so, I believe, and everybody I've talked to in the village that, maybe you live in Nelsonville. I'm, I'm sorry, I was joking, I was joking.
I wouldn't be here.
So, those checks are coming through, and everybody that I've talked to is very pleased with the, with the size of the rebate. The last topic is Main, the Main Street project. We are waiting for the appropriate weather before the tree plantings occur, and that is scheduled for the end of October. The contractor is responsible for obtaining the specimens and the age and the diameter of the trees that we have specified. And for some of the trees, they can't be planted until they go dormant, which is in the October, November timeframe. So that's the last element of the contractor portion of the Main Street project. There is one more element to the Main Street project, and that is the lighting component of the Main Street project. We had worked with Central Hudson to identify eight holes in the village for aerial lights. They agreed, they came here and did a walkthrough with us. We identified one hole that would be a test pole to see whether or not that particular hole would, that particular location for an aerial light would interfere with the building adjacent to it, would it cast down enough light for pedestrian safety. All systems were go, and then a week or two weeks ago, we received a letter from Central Hudson saying that they would refuse, they refused to install aerial lights on Main Street in Cold Spring for a variety of reasons. In other communities that they had installed aerial lights, there were so many complaints about infiltrating light that they had to remove the aerial lights. Aerial lights were originally supposed to be HPS lights, which is what we wanted, or MV lights, which we wanted. Now they are migrating to LED aerial lights, which we don't want. So for at least three reasons, Central Hudson has declined the opportunity to install aerial lights. We've gone back to the DOT because lighting was a component of the Main Street project, gone back to the DOT and said, here's what happened. We were going to do all these LED streetlights. A number of citizens complained, and by the way, we've seen very recent reports that there are health risks associated with LED streetlights. So we migrated from LED lights to LED streetlights to actually a combination of LED and HPS lights, and then we settled on aerial lights, and now Central Hudson will do aerial lights. What do you advise us to do? So we're waiting to hear back from the DOT. We're not happy with their, that Central Hudson response, but I don't see that we have any alternatives at this point. Until such time as they come out with a 3,000 Kelvin streetlight, which they say they're in test mode on, which would be great. That's it.
I don't have any screen.
Steve?
Yeah, I've been working on the Anchorage sites that they're proposing, Coast Guard's proposing.
Thank you, ladies. Enjoying. Come again.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We hope you get your badge.
Thank you for helping us get our badge.
Anyway, a lot of villages and towns along the river, including Coolstown, yes, are in opposition to it, and I was getting some background information, trying to find out more about what actually is going to be stored along the river and what potential hazards that may be. And in my research, I've discovered that a lot of cities and towns along the river are not in support of this. And apparently, there's going to be quantities of crude oil being stored in barges out in the river. And so, we've talked a little bit about, well, not all of us, but some of us have talked about having our own resolution, you know, not in favor of having these Anchorage sites along the river. And I also found out that if, apparently Congressman Maloney is also not in favor of it, and he's meeting directly with the Coast Guard at some point before the, there's a final date of sometime in December when they end public comment, and he's going to take, maybe even including Phillips Town, any information from anybody who's in opposition to this, he'll present it directly to the Coast Guard and hope that that influences their, their decision, because it is ultimately up to the Coast Guard whether they decide to do this or not. And the only things preventing them would be public comment and opposition to it, so. Anyway.
So you said you were waiting for some more information?
Yeah, I have more information, but, I mean, I have enough to say that I'm not in support of it, that I wasn't in support of it when I first heard of it, but, you know, maybe just so we can word our own resolution, you know, I'll put some more information in there.
Okay.
I'm going to be part of a, I don't even know what to call these things, but when everybody meets on the computer and you have a meeting, I forget what it's called. Something like that.
Webex?
What is it?
I don't know, webex?
Webex, something like that. I've been invited to be a part of that, and I'm going to sit in on it, and then after that, I'll make a report next Tuesday.
It'd be good to know, like, how many, I mean, I initially might, I agree, how many boats are there actually?
It's 10, I think.
10.
Well, it's 10 Anchorage sites. I don't know how many boats.
There could be many barges on one acreage site.
Yeah.
What's that?
There'd be many barges at one acreage site, yeah.
And they haven't come up with that number, it's just random?
No.
I think it's 43.
I think I've heard the 40s.
Yeah.
If they're all filled at once or something like that.
And how big are they?
Their barges? Like, you know, like the ones you see pushing the tons of...
That's a lot of space. I think, I think it's important, besides us doing a resolution or a letter, that we encourage everyone else to do letters to Maloney's office. Angry citizens should be doing their own letters to Maloney's office, because the more people they get, you know, one resolution may be fine for a village, but if they get 500 letters from a village or from a town, it's going to make a lot more, they'll get a lot more notice out of it, I think.
Well, I was going to propose that we find a way to open it up to the villagers and have them, you know, whoever writes a letter, print it and add it to it. You know, I don't know if we could propose that on Facebook or if it needs an actual...
It's probably better if they, it's not connected, or, well, if they did it individually, I think, like...
Right, but I mean, just to get the word out.
Yeah, I mean, I can post on Facebook, and hopefully the papers will post, if we can, I know there was something, we can provide someplace for them to send it, I believe. Is it Maloney's office in Newburgh?
Well, they said that if we put it all together, send it to his office in Washington, because that's where they're going to be meeting with the Coast Guard, it's in actual DC itself. But, you know, if you send them, you know, 400 letters and our resolution, you know...
I mean, we could...
I don't, I don't know.
When is your webinar?
It's probably going to be Thursday, I think she said.
You can get some of those numbers inside, if we can put that, maybe put that in the paper, this is what you'll be looking at, so it's not...
I asked that question of the congressman, he didn't know, his assistant did it, and he wasn't sure where all the sites were going to be exactly. I guess that hasn't been shared, or maybe it has by now, but...
Actually, I think you can find it online. I remember, I remember looking at something that showed...
Yonkers and Newburgh, I heard.
Between Beacon and Newburgh, there are three or four sites.
Yonkers has a lot, I think. I think there's more than one area or something like that. That's all I've heard so far.
All right. Well, if you get that little information this week, whatever, that made our next meeting, I'll look at the resolution.
Not next week.
We're not having a workshop?
Nope.
Unless I change it.
I'm actually away anyway, so...
Are you? Okay. It'd be hard to give a report, wouldn't it?
It would be. I would find a way, though.
Yeah, okay.
Send it through.
Brad?
I have nothing.
I just have a couple of things. One is, which was in the paper and also sent here, was the, and I think it's important, you know, kind of what's going on at tourism here, and from the Cold Spring Chamber of Commerce, they're having a mixer at Glenwood on Wednesday, November the 2nd, but I found the text kind of interesting. The focus of this event will be a moderated discussion among the chamber's directors, members, and guests as to continued viability of the organization and its future direction. As with many membership organizations, the chamber has struggled to enlist the active participation of many members over the last several years. Although events and meetings are well-attended, the work to maintain the organization, the scheduling, membership development, and event planning have fallen almost exclusively to shrinking, to a shrinking base of board members and volunteers. This path is not sustainable in the long term and doesn't bode well for the continued health of our business or civic community. With annual elections scheduled for year-end and several board members indicating that they will step down, the chamber board has determined that input from stakeholders is critical if Cold Spring Area Chamber is to move forward. Therefore, we urge chamber members, invite non-member local businesses and other community organizations to participate in this important conversation with us. The chamber actively promotes the Cold Spring and Phillips Town areas as both a tourist destination and a thriving community in which to live and work. So I think it's important to anyone that's in businesses, that, you know, I don't think this is a rarity, it's kind of common now, that there's fewer and fewer people willing to, you know, really put a lot of time and effort into things, and it does wear down, like, people that stay there for quite a while. And Allison, who's the chamber president, I believe right now, is, you know, one of those people who's held on for quite a while. So I think it's important that people with businesses, you know, step up and maybe take some of these offers and start working together. If we want to make this a tourist destination, or we want to make it more viable for commerce, then I think, you know, we have to have people in place to promote that. So, anyway, it's November 2nd, 6 to 8. It's at Glenwood, beautiful place, and hopefully people will get the messaging and head up there. Let's see, what else I have here? I'll just, I'll go into correspondence. I will read this letter, but I did print it out because I found it, like, it was like a really great letter. It's from Catherine Carnaval. She's on Fair Street. It's basically, it's regarding the amount of tourists that are now walking, you know, and heading to Breakneck and the Fuhr Trail. It's addressed to Amy Kukala, hopefully I pronounced that right, from Sina Hudson. And it's, and we have also received another letter, you know, regarding the amount of foot traffic on Fair Street and how it's, you know, it's become worse and worse, and, you know, their fear of the Fuhr Trail going through is, you know, there'll be even more hikers, which is, you know, a valid concern. And, you know, the requesting that they would look into that and that, you know, it really shouldn't be, that shouldn't be part of the path going, you know, directing people through the village through that street. But maybe, I think what really struck me about the letter was, you know, it was well-written, and it wasn't nasty at all. It was, like, informative. She's, like, pro, you know, tourists coming in and tourists, it was just the amount of hikers. And the way it was written was, you know, I thought was exceptionally well-done, and the way letters should be written, you know. Wasn't like, you know, pet peeve or an attack. It was like, you know, putting information there and trying to get, you know, trying to get through and have Sina Hudson understand another point of view from a resident. So, thank you, Catherine.
Does anyone know, I know she referenced that the residents on Fair Street got a letter from the state office of parks.
She did.
Has anyone seen that? She said they got a letter September 2nd, notices as owners of property adjacent to potential routes of the proposed Hudson Highland Fuhr Trail. And I have no idea what that was about, or it'd be interesting to see if we can get a copy of that.
The one thing I've got to report on, too, the bids we got back for the sidewalk improvement down there, it came in like twice as much as we expected, so nothing's going on, I'd write down for that.
I'm sorry, they came in?
Twice as much as we planned.
Thank you.
On Fair Street?
Yeah.
And is that going to go out the bid again, or...
We've got to take another look and see what we could do to come up with another bid or reduce some, reduce the scope somehow. It's a lot of money, for what it is.
Did contact bid on it?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
So that's going to actually...
I think, matter of fact, I got the information right here.
This is following up, like, with our fence cost for fencing?
Yeah.
Because your engineer, Ganger, looked at, I'm sure the number came from somewhere that you were anticipating.
Yeah, it was, like I said, twice as much as we anticipated.
But where did that number come from, you know? The anticipation number?
I think, you know, it was from the engineers and figuring what they estimated it should be.
Right.
I have it there someplace on the bids, but they were, they were one of them.
Also correspondence, we, while you're looking for that, if you would have.
Yep.
From Carol Valentine, 13 Garden Street. Again, I won't read the whole letter, but it's, there are two issues. One is repairing a sinkhole continually in front of her house. I guess it's starting to sink once again, so I will send that concern to our highway chief, and the other is on parking, and the amount of parking that is now, you know, more and more parking on Garden Street. She attributes some of it to our needed parking lot, I don't know if that's true or not, and also to shop owners and employees of shop owners' parking. So she was asking to have access put back across the, where the driveways are, and also if there were, for spacing, so that people would park a little more effectively, I guess.
I thought all of the driveways on Garden Street already had access in front of them.
Maybe they worn off. She's painted again.
Oh, okay.
So I'll pass this on to Anthony.
They never, Garden Street never had spaced, you know, they never had measured parking spaces. It was as many as could fit.
I know. She uses, she thinks that's a solution.
To put in?
To put in, yes.
Wow, okay.
Well, that's, that's what the order is, so I'm probably passing this on.
Interesting. I would, I think every street in the village thinks that...
I would say that would be a problem for Garden Street. You would have far fewer cars able to park on Garden Street if that was done.
Every street in the village has seen an overflow of cars parking on their streets, especially ones that don't have timing on them, and blame whatever, but, you know, it's not just Garden Street that's getting uninvented of extra cars parked, it may be the Minnesota lot, it may be the fact that the police are taking Main Street more regularly.
Contact was in the middle bid.
Excuse me?
Contact was the middle bidder, at $219,000.
Keep us posted. Anyone else have anything for us to comment? That's all. Old business, we have the continuing parade permit, which Officer Kane was supposed to contact Sheriff Smith, and I don't know what's happened with that, because, you know, he brought up a number of issues with me that he was going to discuss with Sheriff Smith, because if they, basically, it's a parade permit for a group of people against domestic violence. They want to march down from the red light on Main Street South to the bandstand, and which brings up a problem with, you know, we need, like, an officer at each, you know, just like any parade, regardless of how many, this was like 50, 50 to 70 people. We need someone at each street intersection to direct traffic while the parade went by. So Officer Kane was supposed to talk to Don Smith and hasn't gotten back to me, so I don't know where that stands. I don't think we have enough police on our own to...
What's the date?
This is the date, October 22nd.
Tish Baravich.
And I explained to, well, I haven't, Tish Baravich, I don't know how you say it. What, how do you say it?
Baravich?
Yeah, Baravich. You know, I just played phone tag with her. I did let her know that there was, the C Street comes in the day that they, at the same time as they were going to stop down at the, at the bandstand, so I'm not sure. I don't know where this is at.
They saw the River Rose coming in that day.
What's that?
The River Rose is coming in that day, too.
The two boats are going to be playing leapfrog that day. C Street comes in, lets off their passengers, it takes, it takes off. River Rose comes in, picks up its passengers, it takes off. C Street comes back, picks up its passengers, and then goes off, and then River Rose comes back and lets off its passengers. So it'll be a busy day down at the dock, there'll be a lot of passengers.
I'm not sure what we should do with this.
Do they want to walk down Main Street down this?
Yeah.
On Saturday?
On the sidewalks or the road?
Right. On the sidewalks or the...
Well, they want to walk down the street. That's why we need police. It was walking down the street.
Right.
I think down the sidewalks.
That wouldn't be a problem.
David, what is the proposed date?
October 22nd.
Thank you.
From 11 to 1.
And they wanted to have a rally down at the bandstand, right?
Of some sort.
Yeah.
But they weren't specific on that. I don't know, there's something we can pass provisionally, or...
Well, I don't think we can pass, until we have protection.
Yeah, I, yeah. Until we, I think we need George to tell us what we can and cannot do.
Well, we might have to do a little special meeting or something, because October 22nd is, all right, I'll talk to George.
How did the hot dog thing go?
Ah, pretty, it was all right. We raised a little over $300 donations. We gave away about a little over 100 hot dogs in two days. It was bad weather, it wasn't good weather at all. So we did it Saturday, and then Sunday we did it again. Saturday, we were at the base of Main Street, and then Sunday we were over, right across the street at Les Talarcios, we were over there. We did it from around noon to around 3:30 both days. So it was all right, it was, I mean, we did raise some money, the money we raised is, you know, we're going to give to the food pantry as well.
Next is Hudson House parking lease.
Everyone's been sent a copy of the lease. There was one that then did change from the version that was sent to you. That change was on page six, and as soon as I find my documentation, I can take a look at it.
Basically, to bring everyone up to speed before Marie gets into it, is, you know, we have a lease agreement with Hudson House, it was part of the approval, I don't know what the year was, Tom Monroe was heading the zoning at the time, and Hudson House needed, it was part of the application, part of the approval, was to have 18 parking, parking spots off of the streets just for their guests, which they agreed to, and it's been, the lease agreement's been extended ever since. It's in three-year increments. Their lease was up on May of 2015, and this kind of, kind of worked out at the same time as the remediation project was going on. So we haven't signed a new lease with them yet. We've been in touch with the owner, or he's been in touch with us, back and forth. We've had, we just work basically off of the old lease, the same, there was like a 3% increase every year, we're just working off of the number they had. Some of our concerns were the mowing of the lawn that was created by the remediation project and the new fencing. There wasn't a fence going north and south, and there is, everything's new, so we wanted to make sure, you know, that they were, they were responsible for maintaining that, and also snow plowing and having gravel pulled out of the, out of the parking lot, you know, making sure they understood that they had to replace that. So we spelt that out clearly in, and that's about it.
So the only thing that John recommends is to include a new paragraph after item number 22 notices. The new paragraph will be, the new item will be item number 23 improvements. What it does is it takes, as John says, it takes some of the text from number 22 and puts it into a separate, more noticeable item, improvements, and that reads, "The leasee agrees not to erect, affix, or display any sign on or in said premises without, in each instance, persecuting the written consent of the building inspector and the Stark District Review Board. Leasee shall make no capital improvements or alterations without the written consent of leaseor." So that's the one, one change John recommended, and the Schedule B has been updated as per your request.
So, no, just...
I'd like to make a resolution on this, that, that the village board accepts this agreement and authorizes the mayor to sign the agreement, subject to, excuse me, I'm sorry, no, 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 subject to attorney review and approval.
One second.
Does this, now, does this, do we sign this before we send, before we send it to them?
No, they signed it.
Right, so shouldn't we be sending it to them, because we do, do, put this all in motion?
Yes, but this says that once John has...
Like you said, to sign this.
Oh, I'm sorry, once executed. How bad if I use the word term executed, as they do in...
Dangerous. Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Did we get a vote on that?
No, we didn't.
We'll wait for it.
Okay.
We'll wait for it. Miss, I'm not infectious.
I'm not sick.
I'm not sick, I'm not infectious.
Nothing's floating around in the air.
The adjustment that you just read from John, is it new? Because I don't see it in the...
It's not. I sent you a new one at about 6, 6 o'clock tonight.
Definitely is.
I just read it.
Did you get it?
It's in the email.
Okay.
I did get it, yeah.
A little before 6.
Do you need a cough drop?
I've got one, thank you.
Are you saving them?
I'd need them for...
It'll work. Or maybe if you didn't, it would be worse.
So you want to repeat that again?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign this agreement once the appropriate signatures have been, have been made to it, pending attorney review and approval.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Finally, off the table, almost. I'm sure something will come up.
Thank you.
Okay, new business? Anything?
This is all business.
What's that? We're only discussing.
Okay.
Well, wait.
No, I guess we should probably hold on.
No, just hold on. We did, I mean, we can mention it, I mean, we are, we just, I received the engineering report from Michael Carr, but when was this?
Because all...
In 2012. In 2012 for the Cold Spring Firehouse. So take a look at that. There are definitely issues like the HVAC system is gone and the roof might need, at the minimum, some major repairs, if not the whole thing. So I did ask fire company for the engineering report and that was sent. So I just passed that out to the board tonight and we can take a look at it. And, you know, we're going to have to deal with it in some way, so it'll be the beginning of a discussion. It's pretty comprehensive. Mike did a good job on it. There's photos and explanations of bearing walls and everything that you want to know about that building. But we're afraid to ask.
Walls that don't have a roof.
There's approval of bills, but I don't have it.
Lynn has them.
I do, I'm right here. It's, oh, batch?
Yeah, before we do that, there's one other thing. As you know, Michelle, our accountant, has, you know, is back on the job and we're catching up. So this is usually the meeting that she does a report on, but she didn't feel like it was all together, didn't want to have like, you know, kind of a draft type of report. So she wanted to, you know, dot all her i's, cross all her t's and she will be giving a report at the next meeting. So all those interested in the finances and where we are and where we were last year, we finally caught up with everything. So that'll be, not next week, the following week.
October 25th.
Okay, sorry, Lynn?
That's okay. Okay, so approval of batch number 3767 for $222,719.88.
I'll make a motion to accept or to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else? Before that? Public comment? Okay. As you can see, if you have an agenda, we're going executive session. When we come out of executive session, we will not be making any decisions. We'll adjourn immediately. It's for, regarding a specific employee.
Any more motion?
Yes, I have a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.